I call to order the City of Columbia, a city council meeting on this December 7th, 2021. I would like to ask Deanne to read the invocation, to present the invocation, and then we'll all stand together and pledge allegiance to the flag.
Lord, bless those who hold office in our government, that they may do their work in the spirit of wisdom, kindness, and justice, and help them to use their authority to serve our citizens faithfully. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call to roll, Deanne.
Here.
Here.
McBane?
Here.
Liston?
Here.
Vitaleo?
Here.
Banner?
Here.
Noel?
Here.
Willard?
Here.
Hudson?
Here.
You all received a copy of the November 16th meeting minutes of city council. You received those. Are there any questions or comments on the minutes? Hearing none, they will be approved as submitted. On reports of commissions and board, we have, you received a copy of the Park Recreation Cemetery Board Meeting Minutes of November 22nd, 2021. Any questions or comments on those minutes? Hearing none, they will be accepted as submitted. Next, we'll move to the manager's report, and we'll turn that over to Lance for his report.
Thank you, Mayor. We talked a little bit in the last couple of meetings, I think, about the language that we set out for COVID, as far as Dora sidewalk signs and side, use of sidewalks. So we put that on the agenda tonight to extend that through the, through December of 2022. The Salem Street Stormwater Project is going pretty well now. They're moving right along. The gas company did come out and lower those lines, and they were looking at doing the laterals, gas laterals, last week. And let's see, the gas company itself should be done in the next couple of weeks. We did pave that, that area with temporary pavement since our last meeting. We had another water service issue that we had to deal with, but that project should be wrapping up as far as getting utilities in the ground. I want to thank the Chamber of Commerce for the appreciation breakfast for the city staff held on the day of the parade, and also take time to say that I thought the parade was excellent, and I think we're all looking forward to it. It's great to see everybody out, and they, you know, they line the streets. So they were, they were waiting for, you know, a real parade thing, so, nice. The insurance committee has made a recommendation for the upcoming year. Thanks, thanks to the insurance committee for everything for that process. The mayor, Councilman Souter, and Liston are on that committee, and we want to thank you for doing that, as well as members of the ASME and OPBBA and the police chief. So thank you all for doing that. We do have a renewal on the, on the agenda tonight, and since we will be changing carriers, we're going to read that as a, as an emergency, so we can get that done before the end of the year. The annexation that we did on Route 7 was filed, and it's all completed now. We're getting very close to moving forward with the administrative side as East Park Avenue, Heck Road, Springfield Road paving project, we're going out to bid very soon, and also the inspection services, and then we'll be doing that in the spring. Planning Commission asked council to consider adoption of a section of the code, excuse me, regarding short-term rentals, and we put that on the agenda. We've placed a temporary budget on the agenda tonight, and any, all the corresponding legislation, we're also cleaning up at the end of the year. So that's as under new business. Auditors have been in the office, they're finishing up audit. I think their last day was yesterday, and should be finishing up with that soon. Street Department, they're getting the trucks ready. They've already used some of them for salt and plowing. Continue to monitor the stormwater project, and everybody's hitting the leaves hard, and thanks for all the departments helping, and I know the park has been helping a lot, so appreciate that. Water Department, as I said, they've repaired several water lines. They've also been out West Salem Streets, actually moving lines, lowering lines, and adjusting some things out there. Waste Water Department, the EPA sent out our new draft discharge permit, and we did look it over with another consultant, and I think we're good to go on that. We did advertise for Waste Water Treatment Plant Operator, and did find two great candidates, so we're going to be adding those on the first of the year. Park and Cemetery, much leaves throughout the park, loud and clean sidewalks uptown. We did have a chimney contractor come out and work on pavilion number two, and, let's see, have been invited to submit a full grant application through ODOT for the second phase of the park cutters. We did that last year, but didn't get very far. We'll see how we do this year. Electric Department, worked on the city fiber project. Worked with a crew to install the new Christmas lights and the timing of them and everything. Appreciate them doing that. And the tree trimming crews are out in sections one and four. So that does complete my report, however, you know, as you're aware, Terry Schaefer, he's been here forever, Terry. We know that, we've been talking about, we've been talking about his retirement for a long time, and how we're going to replace him. We did put a search committee together, and that consisted of a couple R and B members, few council members, mayor, and park board members, Ron Detweiler, Nancy Turpak. Really appreciate everything that they did that, you know, go through that process. We did look out, you know, did an international or national search, I should say, and we narrowed down the candidates to five, we did those interviews, and for me, one of, one of the, it was, it was, the interviews were, it's a great process, and I was very happy to see that one of the interviews really stood out, knocked it out of the park for us, and it was really impressive. And I'm here to introduce Tim Reisch, internal candidate, as the new park superintendent tonight. So I've asked him to come up and just introduce himself and talk a little bit about what he has vision for the park. And again, thank you, everybody, for the selection committee, and thanks, Tim, for, you know, being committed and putting the work into it. Take the, take the floor.
Morning or afternoon, nevermind. I'm Tim Reisch, for those that don't know here. I'm going to start out by handing you some paperwork if you'd like, just some basic information. I just wanted to touch base and kind of go over here. This is what I consider our goals and vision here, coming into a new superintendent with the Park and Cemetery. And I kind of broke it down on this paper in three areas, short-term, long-term, and ongoing, and I'm not going to go through all of it, you guys can see most of it, but I just wanted to touch base with a couple of things here, starting with the ongoing. The ongoing are, are goals and visions I have that I'm going to carry on from Terry and also build upon my own and put my own little touch on it. The first thing being establish a culture shift through focusing on hard work, communication, collaboration, and accountability. With the park forever changing for the better and the great things that are happening there. I know the expectations are changing for the park as well. The expectations from you are changing, the expectations from the community are changing, the expectations from Lance, and also my own personal expectations. So I know those expectations are changing, and we need to meet those as a department. And that's, that's my goal with those four focus areas of hard work, communication, collaboration, and accountability, to meet your expectations, the community expectations, and everybody's expectations. Just to keep building the park and cemetery into what it has the potential to be, but it's also, we're starting with a great foundation through the, the work that the R and B committee's done, the private donations such as Mrs. Tingle and others. That's, that's created a foundation, and I touched on that in point three, that it's there, it's going to last hundreds of years. And I view it as my job and my job to get the department in continuing in the right direction. I think we're heading that way, and we just need to keep building on things and building on the foundation that those committees and people have laid for our city. But, but one of the short-term goals for myself and our department, and the number one thing, is creating a buzz. When I say buzz, I mean to get people excited to use the park to compare the cemetery and how beautiful it is to other cemeteries around here and even the state. But to be where somebody's thinking, I need a, I want to plan a family reunion or a birthday party, first thing that pops in their head, I want to be Firestone Park. And that's through enhancing our pavilions with heating, air conditioning, maybe new tables and chairs, things like that. Just continue to build a better product for the citizens and outside citizens to come to our park and use. But to create that buzz is, is to be able to create a website and also social media platforms. Social media has its ups and downs sometimes, but it's here to stay. And the positive thing is to use that for marketing and getting information out, but also to use that purpose for social media is to entertain also. Things like maybe scavenger hunt or things like that, to get people drawn into the park and utilizing the park is our main goal. The cemetery's in need of, it's coming up here, it's going to need a new section or two. We just need to continue to expand, like I said. Put out a better product and continue, never be satisfied with what we have. There's always room for improvement no matter what. If things are aging, or there's just a need for new things, just always looking for the betterment of the park and cemetery. So and just to, you can read the long-term stuff there, too. There's, there's some high goals there that we'd like to shoot for, and we're going to shoot for the moon. But also, the last thing there in the short term is the collaboration. A goal of mine is to get the community, people outside the community, people inside the community, businesses in the community, to, to create a relationship where everybody's utilizing. One of the things that I thought about the program, creating programs where citizens can come in and maybe have a pickleball clinic or a tournament, or potentially work with a local lumberyard or a local store to where children are building birdhouses, and we put them throughout the park and creating, so people in the community can feel their touch on the park as well. So they feel like they belong there and want to continue to enhance that park and cemetery. So you, you can read the rest of it there, pretty plain and simple, but I just wanted to say thank you for this opportunity, and I do look forward to working with you guys. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. This is Ron Detweiler, Park.
I just want to make a few comments. First of all, I would be remiss if I didn't take the opportunity to thank the people who have been here for the last four years. And it goes without saying, I mean, what Terry's done, he were posted with a position, how do you replace something that's got 40 years of experience? Park Board is extremely happy, Jay, for him to be on board, and so it's a win-win situation for us. Terry's going to get to retire and enjoy that retirement. I feel we have an excellent substitute coming in. I wanted to thank council. As you know, Park Board's been a little hectic over the last four or five years. And first off, thank you for the reappointments of your council representatives to Park Board. Both Nancy Turpak and Larry Baughman were reappointed as council positions. With that, we have over 60 years of experience on that park board. And these are individuals that are from this community, and they have a very good understanding of Firestone Park and what we're doing there. Thank you also to council for your involvement over the last four or five years. Dan Becker has been our liaison from council and has been invaluable for us. And we appreciate that tremendously. Also, the rest of council, I mean, and Vitaleo during pandemic was on every one of our meetings as a support individual. Skip stepped in here during the search committee. Again, invaluable support for us in going through that process. And of course Lance also, I take him for granted sometimes, but you guys are lucky to have. We're anxious to get started. Again, we're seeking council your support in these upcoming projects in the park. Our mantra this year is going to be maintain and manage. And it's going to be, there's so many great things that have happened in the park, but think ahead what the responsibility is going to be from Park Board and council to maintain these projects and also manage them. We've already started for next year, putting proper paperwork together. We look forward to working with council as far as Park Board's concerned. Once again, a huge thank you to Terry Schaefer for all his years of experience, and congratulations to Tim on the appointment. Thanks.
Thank you very much. I would just like to comment that one of the secrets to Columbia's success is the number of community citizens that volunteer their effort and their knowledge in so many different ways. And I had the great opportunity through this search process to get a chance to spend some time with Ron and Nancy Turpak and just realizing the knowledge that they have about the park, their commitment to the park. It was just, it was, for me personally, very enjoyable to, you know, get a chance to really hear what they're doing and what they're thinking. And we are truly blessed to have a great park board, and we should never take it for granted that we have that kind of park board. So we want to turn around, and I'm sure everybody up here agrees with me, wants to share our, our thoughts about how much we appreciate the hard work that the Park Board has to do. And it's a tremendous tradition that, you know, Terry has, you know, put forth and kind of setting some standards at the park. And, you know, his smiling face, Tim, you're going to have to pick that up. You know, he, he always had a smile for anybody that walked through the park. I take advantage, I take exception to that. But, but I did want to say that. We're really excited about where we've been and where we're going. And I think it's really exciting, and thank you all for everything you do. And we look forward to seeing where it's going to end up. We don't know. Any other comments?
You said it too well.
Well, thank you again. Okay, there are no questions, after questions on the manager's report. We have no business, and then turn to new business. The first, did I miss something? Oh, the bill list. I am sorry. I did miss the bill list. You've received a copy of the bill list of 12/7/21. Are there any questions or comments on the bill list that you received? Okay, hearing none. Now I will turn to new business. And I would like to start by asking if we could have a motion to read all ordinance and the resolution by title only.
So moved.
Second. Motion second. Call to roll.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Vitaleo?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Motion carries. I would also now like to ask for a motion to consider the first ordinance tonight as an emergency.
So moved. Second.
Motion second. Call to roll.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Vitaleo?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Motion carries. Ordinance number 21-0-3094, this emergency. An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Anthem, Blue Cross, and Blue Shield for the purpose of providing health insurance benefits for the full-time employees of the City of Columbia.
So moved. Second.
Motion second. Any questions on the motion? Call to roll.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Vitaleo?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
Ordinance, ordinance number 21-0-3095. This is a first reading. An ordinance establishing dates of the regularly scheduled council meetings and meetings of boards and commissions for the calendar year 2022, and directing the publishing and posting of this ordinance.
So moved. Second.
Motion second. Any discussion on the motion? You call to roll, Deanne.
Liston? Liston? Liston?
Yes.
Vitaleo?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Always like a moment of suspense. Ordinance number 21-0-3096, first reading. An ordinance amending appropriation ordinance number 21-0-3069 by adding $222,600 in the general fund, $25,005 in the park fund, $5,000 in the police pension fund, $96,000 in the water fund, $30,000 in the sewer fund, $62,000 in the electric fund, $1,000 to the guarantee deposit fund, $346,800 in the income tax fund, $1,000 in the unclaimed monies fund, and $5,000 in the special assessment bond retirement fund for all the payment of current expenses as they may arise.
So moved.
Second.
One correction, it's just a typo. It should be $25,500.
Okay, we'll, we will correct that for the next reading. Any other questions on the motion? Deanne, we call to roll.
Vitaleo?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Motion passes. Ordinance number 21-0-3097, first reading. An ordinance transferring $200,000 from the income tax fund, $100,000 to the general fund, and 101,000. So it should just be 100,000, that's what I, 100,000 to the capital improvement fund for all the payment of current expenses as they may arise.
So moved. Second.
Can you all note that change? Any discussion on the motion? Okay, hearing none. I call to roll, Deanne.
Banner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Vitaleo?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance number 21-0-3098, first reading. An ordinance transferring $30,000 from the general fund, $30,000 to the park fund, all for the payment of current expenses as they may arise.
So moved.
Second.
Question on the motion? Call to roll.
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Vitaleo?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Ordinance number 21-0-3099, first reading. An ordinance to make temporary appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Columbia, State of Ohio, for the first three months of the year 2022, ending March 31, 2022.
So moved. Second.
Any comments? Call to roll, please.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Vitaleo?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
This is a resolution, resolution number 21-R-590, first reading. The resolution authorizing the city manager to extend the date of the expiration of certain measures taken by this council for the benefit of business being necessary due to the pandemic. being necessary due to the pandemic, as were originally recommended to this council by the progress committee, and which were then subsequently adopted by this council through its motion made and approved on Jan- July twenty-first, two thousand and twenty. Motion?
So moved.
Second. Now, do we all recall? Want to make a statement, Dan, on that clarification?
Um, yeah, I mean, these were the, the motions, motion that we passed to, believe it was, the sandwich, I mean, it's all laid out here, the sandwich signs throughout town, the tables on the sidewalks. We put the tables and chairs in the pocket park. Um, and of course, Mulberry Avenue, the Dora thing. So this is all stuff we did approve before. I do have a question, though. Um, on section three, uh, where if there are conflicts that the other ordinance are, are repealed, being that this is a temporary measure, is repealing quite the, that we want to do here? Does that present any problems that we need to be aware of?
I mean, obviously, I'm, I'm in favor of this, but it's that, probably, I'll tell you what. If we need to change the wording for the second reading, we can always do that.
That's fine.
So let me take a look at that. I'll look at it. Is that the standard, you know? Lineage that we know?
Yeah, I'm just thinking it's a temporary thing, so we don't want to repeal something.
Thank you. Uh, any other questions or comments on this motion?
I'd like to make a recommendation that we, instead of approving it for one year and then looking at it again, that we approve it until council resends it. That way, if everything's going fine, we don't have to worry about it next year. If we have any problems with it, then we can, we can address it right then and resend it then.
My only concern there is, um, like, one of the things we're changing is part of the side ordinance. And that's, I think, is part of zoning, if I'm correct. So we're kind of sidestepping the zoning process. And I think we are, we're talking about making this permanent. This is really just to kind of get us over the hump until we have time to get that done. So, um, I think, I think we should make this permanent. I just think that we, the process, we need to follow the process, especially when dealing with zoning.
Any other questions or comments?
One of the things that I believe we, when we originally approved this, was that while doors are in place and allows people to go outside and drink, they're only allowed to drink while seated, uh, unless there was an official door approved. And I don't know if that's included in this or not.
Sure, yeah, that's outlined in the, um,
In the actual document?
Yeah, and then, um, if they're, you know, if they're selling cups, the people are, are told, you know, at that time that they have to be seated.
Okay.
And that's regulated by the business.
Any other questions or comments? Dan, we call the roll.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Batilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
Okay, very good, thank you. The next item under new businesses, we want to have a discussion of draft short-term rentals codified ordinance chapter. So, does somebody want to take, Mark, do you want to make some comments or?
Sure. The whole idea of the short-term rental is to basically cover the idea of vacations. Let's see, VRBO, vacation rentals by owners, Airbnb is the most common one. And if you've read anything in the newspaper, any sources, you've seen that although people probably initially thought, hey, these organizations, Airbnb, we're really going to regulate and take care of how things are run, not so. Um, in fact, it seemed like it was about just the opposite. So I think what communities have started doing, and even smaller communities such as ours, is actually trying to regulate the use of short-term rentals. Not necessarily prohibit them, maybe regulate where they are and regulate when they can actually be operated. For example, one of the communities I looked at picked two weeks out of the year um, that you could even operate a short-term rental within that community. Most haven't been that restrictive, but they may restrict the location to a specific zoning district. They may restrict the number within a particular zoning district or the total number, period. Normally, the idea is to kind of also make somebody responsible on-site. Because another thing that I think people have found out about short-term rental business is that you don't always have somebody that's responsible for it within, let's say, five hundred miles. So if you have a problem, you are on your own. Um, so what the chapter that I've proposed would do is require somebody to be responsible that's local, resp- uh, require contact phone numbers. So the idea is that if somebody comes into the community and decides to utilize a short-term rental, they're not going to be left holding the bag with a place that's not quite as advertised and with nobody to get a hold of to complain. And a lot of those things have happened with short-term rentals. And I think that's why communities are really starting to regulate them so that they can kind of control what goes on. So if you read through this, you're going to see there's limitation on the number of people, limitation on the number of cars, where the cars can be parked. Of course, you can get into regulating how much noise is caused. Um, so you can do virtually anything that I'll say is reasonable. And a lot of the ordinances that I've looked at have some things in common. So what I've tried to do is utilize what's already there and try to adapt it for us. But again, this is a proposal. Now, one of the things you'll see right off the bat is uh, that we've actually, and this came from planning commission, a limitation on to where. And we limited it, or planning commission recommended limitation to commercial, C one, C two, C three, C four, C five. Um, there's a couple of ways to handle that. Um, the version that you see was my second version. The first version, basically, my thought was rather than make it part of the actual chapter in the zoning code, that you would make it part of the enabling legislation. If it is part of the code, then in order to change the district or change anything, that's going to be an amendment to the zoning code, just like any other amendment. I'll answer any questions, um, but I think most of you are kind of familiar with the idea. I think everybody up here is familiar with the idea of a short-term rental. Instead of calling them Airbnbs and VRBOs, the normal term is short-term rental, which basically means we're talking about less than thirty days.
I think that your planning commission has reviewed this, any comments from there?
We had a pretty good discussion about it, two, two separate meetings. And I think our biggest thing was, uh, that me as a resident, I wouldn't want to have a new neighbor every weekend. So, so we felt it should be in, in the commercial zones.
And that does not violate the Airbnbs that are being put on, parked on, parked?
They are commercial, that's, well, C four, I believe.
Yes.
I had a question about, uh, the section oh-four and number seven, where the maximum number of occupants that can accommodate short-term rental not to exceed two per bedroom plus three additional occupants. Is that intended to mean that, uh, only two people can sleep in a bedroom? And my concern there was that, uh, a parent who has a young kid, a toddler, whatever, whatever, would be, uh, very likely to want to keep that toddler with them in their own bedroom rather than having him off in some other bedroom without supervision. And, uh, there may be other circumstances where even people under the age of eighteen might be occupying, you know, two or three, or three or four of a bedroom in some cases. I grew up in a big family and we did that all the time. And, uh, but that's, that's something I think that we need to understand what exactly that means.
I think you are reading that correctly. The idea is you're limiting the number of people by the number of people per bedroom. You're right, you could run into, and I thought of that when I wrote it, but actually, that was a pretty common way of defining, we're limiting how many people could be in. So you didn't have animal house.
Yeah, and I, and I sort of thought that would be the case because, uh, I know that there are a lot of circumstances where college kids and others go out and rent a, an R and B and, you know, they basically have a party that, uh,
Right.
It's very bad for the local community. But I think if, if this is simply saying that's the number of people who can stay at the place as opposed to only two people per bedroom, uh, it's, it's probably appropriate. But, because that, that would allow people to put the people wherever they want to put their kid, put their kids wherever they want to put their kids.
Yeah, I, I think reading this, I don't see that it specifically says, you know, only two people in a bedroom. It just, as a, as a general math, the idea.
I just wanted to make sure that was the case. It's more of a, the intent is to limit how many people are in the house by limiting how many people are in a bedroom. So that you're not putting, you know, ten people in a bedroom in a four-bedroom house, ten in each, and gee, how many people are now staying there?
Right.
Yeah, okay.
I have a couple of questions. One is, uh, the number of vehicles. Like, for example, um, you know, the ones that are going out of Firestone Farms, I don't believe there's going to be garages there. So are they limited then to two vehicles, period? I mean, for, for those units specifically, they're a one-bedroom anyway, so it's not, it's not a huge issue. But I'm just wondering if it's, yeah, if it's a two-bedroom or, you know, if something like that where there's a parking lot.
I, I think, again, it's an, it's another way that a lot of the ordinances I looked at were limiting, you know, so that you don't have ten vehicles there and they're parked in the yard, they're parked in the neighbor's yard, and they're just parked all over the street. Um, so again, that was just an attempt to try to limit how many. But you're bringing up a good point. And one of the things I had thought about was talking to Firestone Homestead and finding out, okay, what are you guys going for parking? Because I don't honestly know what they're going to do.
Yeah, I don't either. I'm just thinking that we maybe can build some exception into the permit, you know, for specific circumstances. I don't, I know that gets dangerous when you start, because then all of a sudden, you're coming up with, all right, it's what Augie thinks today, and that's, you know, we don't want to put Augie in that position either.
No.
Um, but I do think we could want to consider at least looking at that.
I'm just kind of speculating, but I think maybe that Firestone deal, they'll be parked in the parking lot.
Yeah.
Yeah, but the,
Which isn't quite there yet. But I think that's exactly what they're, if I had to guess.
It's, it's just the code specifies whatever fits in the garage plus two vehicles. So we have to, you know, if, if there's no garage, then what we do? And like I said, Firestone Farms, they're their one-bedroom units anyway. It's not likely they're going to have six cars, uh, but it's just something that could come up.
Maybe when they apply, we can have them plus how many available parking spaces they're on site, you know? So we can verify them for that for parking.
Yeah, part of the idea of this is that there's a permit that will be issued. And those permits, of course, can be denied if people, one, violate the terms of the permit, don't do what they're supposed to as a host, uh, have violations, then we can pull the permit. So there's kind of an idea in there of enforcement. But here's the caveat. If we're going to expect Augie to do the enforcement, we do need to make it very clear so that he doesn't have to interpret this all the time.
Well, and part of the concern is how, how we have enforcement of this because, you know, are we going to have to monitor the VRBO site, the Airbnb sites? I mean, there's so many sites out there that you can do rentals through. People may not apply for a permit, and then people may come back against the city to say, you know, they weren't permitted and we didn't know that they were operating. So, I mean, there's concerns there.
You know, what I would say is you guys are bringing up some great questions. And I've thought about some of this as I'm drafting it. It's a great idea, but with something like this, enforcement is always the issue. And then responsibility. Are we recommending short-term rentals? No, we're not doing that. But if we don't police things, you know, we have to be careful in how we write the ordinance so that, as Amanda says, we don't have somebody coming back on us saying, well, you didn't tell us about so-and-so. You know, I'm mentioning VRBO and Airbnbs, but next year, there could be ten additional ones that aren't even known of, known yet.
Or, or they're posting them on Craigslist.
Yep. Well, exactly what we don't want is somebody using, not to pick on Craigslist, but I will, from the standpoint of, you know, there's absolutely no monitoring, no nothing. You're completely on your own.
All right, I'll jump onto my second question. Uh, bed and breakfast, um, are they still being permitted conditionally in the R two and R three zones? Or are we going to, because you've got the section here that says bed and breakfast established or sloppily operating are still good to go.
Right.
Um, but what are we going to be taking those out of R two and R three entirely? Because otherwise, I think we need a very specific definition of bed and breakfast for those. For those, otherwise, somebody's going to go off to bed and breakfast.
Right, it's not a short-term rental. Again, that's something that you all have to decide. Do you want bed and breakfast still to be in R two? If so, then we need to define specifically what the difference between a short-term rental and a bed and breakfast is.
That should be fairly easy to do because every red, uh, one I've ever stayed at, uh, the owner was living there and provided the breakfast and, uh, had direct control. Where at Airbnb, there's no owner present, not a few people are there.
The host is normally not there with you. Now, in some cases, yeah, they are, but you're right.
Comes a bed and breakfast, it's not a short-term rental under this, which is fine. Um, I just, I, I was just curious if, if we were going to take that out and consider all bed and breakfast to be short-term rentals? Because they, you can easily read this, you know, bed and breakfast, the same into this. Or if we're going to leave that part alone and just come up with a definition? I personally think we go up with a definition and, and leave bed and breakfast in R two and R three.
I gotta agree with Dick, it's pretty, it's pretty almost self-explanatory, like, you know?
Yeah, but I don't assume anybody, you know, anybody is going to need the right.
It never, it never hurts to define it better than what it is.
Yeah.
Yeah, so. Um, and then there was one other question I had that was, just caught my attention. There's one section here, I think it's in violations, where a, a guest in a, in one of these can't enter a property without permission within five hundred feet of the short-term rental. And I'm wondering why we're limiting that to five hundred feet.
That was arbitrary with the idea that you're not having them, you know, I guess you could say half a mile. You could say a thousand feet, you can say whatever you want. A couple I read seemed like, A couple I read seemed like they came up with five hundred, so I thought, okay, I'll throw that in, let's decide.
I, I mean, I personally, I'm completely happy with the idea of saying you can't enter private property without permission, period, in, within the city. Because it, otherwise, it's like, well, okay, I can, you know, I could, if I'm at Firestone Farms, I can't go to Dairy Queen illegally, but I can go break into, you know, any one of our houses is more than five hundred feet away from Firestone Farms. So, and that wouldn't be a violation of the, of the short-term rental specifically. That's a thought that popped into my head when I was looking at it.
I guess I'm not understanding, I'm not understanding why that would even be in there. Because that's, that's a, you're breaking the law at that point.
Yeah, it, it just listed, I mean, you, you may be right too, but it's listed in here, I'm sorry, I lost the section, but as if, as a violation, that can cause.
You'd lose your permit.
It could cause you to lose your permit, I think.
Which would be. Those three, probably those four. Possibly grounds for denial.
I don't see grounds for denial, I know I read it in here, I'm not crazy.
Yeah, yeah. Rubber collision suspension. There it is, number four under revocation suspension, eight seventy-four, S.
There, there you go, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, uninvited entry of short-term rental occupants upon private property within five hundred feet of the short-term rental.
Say adjacent.
What's that?
You could say adjacent, if, I mean, you could, you don't have to limit it to five hundred feet. So you could say adjacent property. The idea is if you're in a short-term rental, stay on that property.
Stay, yeah, I'm just, I, I thought the five hundred foot limitation was unusual. I would even think it's adjacent, like you said, or there's no real limitation there because if you go break into somebody's house halfway across town or go stumbling, you know, into somebody's yard drunk halfway across town, would that not be a violation that would allow for revocation? So, I mean, I, it's, I don't know if it matters, it's just one of those things that caught my attention.
What we're doing there is protecting the neighbor, basically?
Yeah, I mean.
Yep, so then, why don't we just say adjacent?
That's what I was going to say, just say adjacent, and you're probably covering it.
Well, if, if somebody has a short-term rental and they rent to somebody in good faith, and some nice person decided to go break into something, or stumble through somebody's yard, is that really, is it really his fault?
What do you mean?
Well.
I think it's one of the risks of having the business. I mean, if you're renting to somebody and they are, you know, that person is breaking the law, that, you know, it's your, it's your property that's causing the problem. So to me, it's a reasonable expectation that we don't want people wandering around drunk and breaking into people's houses or busting up people's backyards or something.
That's a reasonable, that's a reasonable request or expectation, even if you live in town. I mean, you, you're not supposed to do that.
Yeah, we can't take somebody's house away from them if they live in town, but this is a business, and I think we, we're just setting expectations for the business.
If you look at the beginning of the section, it basically uses the word may. So may revoke, or suspend, and there is a provision that basically if you don't like what the zoning inspector does, you can appeal that. So I don't know if I have as much of a problem with may and you put adjacent property. Is it the short-term rental host's responsibility? Ultimately, yes. Yeah, if you're running a short-term rental and somebody gets hurt, you get sued. I mean, you know, it's your property. Can we take that into consideration that the short-term rental host did everything right but still got a, you know, an idiot that decided to go into the neighbor's house, you know, basically had a big party and caused lots of problems? My guess is they'll be arrested for doing that.
Oh, yeah.
But I don't know if that would be the short-term rental host's fault necessarily. Ultimately, they're responsible for it because they own the property.
Well, the host should be responsible for advising the people that are staying there what the rules are. And, I mean, I could see something very simple, like, you know, two kids out throwing baseballs or footballs back and forth, crossing the property line to get a ball and have someone get all upset because they stepped through their garden. So it's, it's really the responsibility, I think, of the owner to advise the tenants of what they're allowed to do and not allowed to do.
So the owner could post these rules in a room?
Well, I mean, it could, yeah, I mean, they could post the rules, I mean, hotels do that all the time. They post something on the door that says, this is what you can do and what you can't do.
Yeah.
But even.
And an individual owner can probably post on their own site that, you know, for their, on Airbnb, whatever, as far as what their specific rules are with their property.
Yeah, and then, and in fact, when the person signs up for it, they are agreeing to obey those rules.
Yeah, they are.
Well, it gives us leverage if we have a problem, then we can revoke their license.
Yeah, right, and I agree with that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think changing to adjacent is fine, I was just, I was curious why the three, the five hundred feet specifically was there, so.
It was, I saw it several places, so I thought, eh, okay, I'll throw it in. But I, I kind of thought, I was trying to figure that out, but I thought, well, somebody will bring it up.
And I think that's all my questions.
Any other comments? How do we wish to proceed here? Building a big move here.
Well, I think Mark has to get some finalized version that's approved by the Planning Commission, and then that comes before us for final approval.
Good. Yep.
All right.
Any of you want to? I'm assuming Mark's heard most of the commentary here, so he'll include.
If I didn't hear it, I'll go from Dan. But I am taking notes, so hopefully I've gotten most.
There might be some kind of a recording of this meeting too, that would be helpful, so.
Yes. Thank you for the comments.
Yeah, thank you, good comments. Okay, it's home new business now. I'd like to say this before we take action, but we do have scheduled an executive session we, the council may choose to go into. We don't plan to have any other business conducted after the executive session, so I'm going to take the opportunity to get some of these items taken care of at the end of the agenda. So those of you who are here will have a chance to comment and hear those statements. So I'd like to start with, does anybody out there want to make any comments tonight? This is your opportunity. Dale? All right, no other comments from even our electronic friends that we see on, on the screen? Okay, don't hear any comments, how about council comments? Any of you up here who want to make comments?
I'd just like to ask Lance a question about food trucks in town. Do we know if all the food trucks that are appearing different places are fully licensed appropriately? And then, secondly, I've noticed that there are a number of situations where food trucks have been parked on properties that are approved for trucks longer than the two-day limit without operating that we originally put into the ordinance.
Yeah, I can, I can get a list. I believe that the couple that you're referring to, one is owned by that individual, right? Up, uptown?
Yeah, but there's still, that, that site is approved for operation of a food truck, but he's still in violation if he's leaving the same food truck on that site for longer than two days while it's not being used. And actually, I think the one up here is not his, I'm not sure if it's his or not.
Yeah.
My wife commented.
Which one is it?
It was one of the other ones.
Green one?
I don't remember which one it was.
Green one is not his.
Yeah.
Yeah, that one, that one belongs to a guy that just got off.
Yeah.
Yeah. It might be worth a reminder to.
Sure.
The people who have approvals for having food trucks on their property that they're not approved for longer than two days without being used.
Sounds good.
Anything else for the good of the order?
I, I read in the paper and noticed the city of Salem's income tax has, revenue has increased. Maybe Rita has something to do with that?
No. All the comments I've heard said that that just couldn't be good.
Yeah.
Interesting. Interesting observation. Any other comment up here? Well, I'd like to entertain a motion to go into executive session for the discussion of personnel, section one twenty-one point twenty-two, G1.
So moved, second.
Motion is second. Call the roll.
Yes.
Tilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
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 McBean?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you all. I have a motion to come out of executive session.
So moved, second.
Second, Dan?
Tilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Souders?
Yes.
McBean?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
I hear a motion to adjourn.
So moved.